Everybody know. It takes a call, a meeting of the finance and personnel committee to order on Monday, July eighth, two twenty twenty four at six forty five P M. Um, Green here, Newman's here, Moore here, Gates.
Here.
Brenda.
Um, I did get one additional bill this afternoon, um, for L N R. It was his statement of recriminize from the parks. Um, for a hundred eighty three thousand forty eight cents. Um, it came in my email after I printed your report. So I will add that one to it. So approved too. How much did you say? A hundred eighty, one eighty three forty eight.
What's your four bread?
Um, they get filters and stuff like that for the orders from them.
All empty.
Yes. That stuff. Um, everything else on here is pretty routine. Garbage fire service. Engineering.
We'll find out that the car show will be reimbursing a little over eighteen hundred dollars for the banners. That we put up on here soon. That full amount to fasten.
Well, I'll make a motion to pay the bills as submitted along with the addition of the L N R statement, uh, in the amount of a hundred eighty three dollars and thirty eight cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Make the motion in a second to approve the bills as submitted. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Make the motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. We are adjourned.
For.
That'll get me clean as hell, time it is.
Right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to, uh, call the Village Board of Lannan, uh, meeting to order on Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. All rise from the president's allegiance. They drop the bedgear, please.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a reminder, please silence your phones if you haven't already done so. Uh, roll call. Lake?
Here.
Cala Tolaro B.
Here.
Newman, Eric Moore.
Here.
Grenier.
Here.
Summers. That's what you're turned yet and Yates is present. Statement of public notice.
Send most in.
Item number five, discussion of possible action on the reading, correction, and approval of the minutes from the six, ten, twenty four village board meetings. Do you have any comments, uh, with corrections?
I made a motion that we approve the minutes, um, of the June tenth meeting. Now sparkling.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve the minutes. Item number six, committee reports, finance and personnel.
We will cover the number fifteen.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Legislative, Anna?
Something that this time.
Uh, parks, rec, beautification.
Uh, yeah, um, reminder to everyone that July twenty eighth is the car show in Lannan. Um, and uh, I'd like to thank the car show and Jan is here tonight and Patrick, uh, the banners are up along, um, Bain Street. I hope you've all seen them. They look great. Um, and then August twelfth, uh, again, just a reminder that we're going to start, uh, pressure washing and painting the village hall, um, on or around August twelfth. So, um, they'll put signs up so nobody parks near the village hall and gets the dirt and possible paint that may, uh, drift during that time. So be aware of that. I think that's all I have.
And when is, uh, the awareness walk? Is that September fourteen?
Uh, yeah, and then also National Night Out, um, youth lieutenant is August, so August seventh is the National Night Out. So that would be the next event then after the car show.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen. Uh, public safety?
That people's time.
Uh, public works, recycling, and sewer.
Uh, we've been quite busy. Uh, Strand had their electrical engineer in town and we reviewed all the, uh, lift stations and wellhouses for the new SCADA system. Uh, we also, uh, reviewed the, uh, placing of the new gen set at the Whispering Ridge, uh, wellhouse. And, uh, we're going to make some arrangements there to have a temporary generator there while we're replacing and putting in a new one. Uh, we started working on, uh, enforcing the weeds and brass cutting. Uh, that's been started and going, not as fast as it could, but it is. Uh, trees, we're working on, uh, dead trees and cottonwood trees. And we're, uh, looking at, uh, a, uh, pre-cutting company to, uh, give us a hand for the people who won't do theirs. We'll have to do them like we did a few years ago in charge. Uh, I see we have the Bartelt sidewalk replaced, which is very, very nice. I appreciate that.
Have to live it.
And then, uh, the final issue, uh, we've discussed, uh, parking lots. We have money in the budget to redo the parking lot, uh, at the park and behind village hall here. Uh, discussed it with the, uh, village president. I don't think we'll do anything with the park. Because that's going to be a major rebuild and, uh, we'll wait till we do the upgrades that we're talking about there and then we'll, uh, rebuild that parking lot. Back here, I think, uh, we'll defer other than just some, uh, crack ceiling and it does need restripte. So we'll do that. But again, if we do end up doing some remodeling here, it's going to get disturbed. And that's all I got.
Jared, I have a question for you. On, um, on Good Hope Road there, were there triangles that's up for sale on the hill going up that they cut the grass on the triangle, while on the hill going up they didn't. Is that our responsibility?
We, uh, no, it's the property owner's responsibility.
Up that hill, on that incline coming down?
That's their property. And also, uh, the trees need to be trimmed, uh, that are facing Good Hope Road. It's, um, on the right away and it's okay. But, uh, we've been in contact with the property owner and, uh, he used to have Sam Schmidt do it, but unfortunately he's left us. Yeah, so, uh, he authorized us to go ahead and so we cut it to get the heavy stuff.
I just didn't know that grass on the hill because on the, on the incline, um, that's our responsibility or county because?
Well, the right away is known.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right away, about five P up there. Well, we have many problems. Are we going, are we going to weeding? People are concerned about budget for our staff.
Right.
You know, now I saw the dentist, he's done some of the fire items, which is very important.
Yep.
But there could be a lot of weeding around sign bases and such too.
And, you know.
Need a group of volunteer, the weed eater gang.
There you go.
First, provide some notes. Regulators.
Uh, it's for me. Department reports, uh, clerk's office.
Uh, utility bills will be mailed out tomorrow along with the, uh, postcards for the new spoke enforcement. Um, we have an election on August thirteenth. Uh, polls open seven A M. to eight P M. In-person absentee voting starts July thirtieth. Um, I will be out of the office for a couple of weeks starting on Monday. So office hours may fluctuate for a couple of weeks during that time depending on what Nicole's got going on here. Um, so just be patient with us for a while.
Brenda, if I made up something to insert in the water bills, could, could I do that without? No, not anywhere. No, 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 not this time around.
Yes.
But I'm thinking in the future, I'd like to, um, publish the, um, meeting online and the sign up for the, um, for the, uh, opt-in text messaging. So it wouldn't increase the cost if I just made a little slip of paper that said, this is how you sign up. I think, I think we should do that. I'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Uh, police department.
Um, nothing new to report as far as monthly activity. Uh, the June report was sent out or given out. Um, we did have a report this morning, uh, Chief Belto reported some criminal damage to his property that involved a dark colored pickup truck around the hours of one A M. This morning, uh, it started about Lannan Road in Good Hope. Uh, ran over, intentionally ran over several mailboxes, street signs, uh, went into the parking lot of Lannan Elementary. Um, also ran over signs there, continued down Lannan Road onto Forest View, uh, ran over signs there. Um, so we are looking for any type of video, surveillance video, ring camera footage, anything that anyone may have. Um, I did post on our social media page for that to be shared. Um, so we have that, uh, going on that, uh, again, Chief Bell's investigating. And then, um, our national night out is coming up on Wednesday, August seventh from five to eight. Um, we, Chief Bell and I have been diligently working on, um, uh, fundraising and, um, donations, uh, for that, for that event. Go ahead.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Uh, item number eight. Uh, citizen comments. This is my public comments on any subject without any discussion by the board of trustee members or action, except for possible referral to a governmental body or village agents. Uh, Mr. Kritzla, Jim, you're up first.
Hi, I'm Jim Kritzla from the Lannan Falls Lions. And as you all know, we do our pancake breakfast here. We make it here, or punched holes in pancakes and stuff, and we use the hall for servings and sauces. Then we'll have it up this year. I was thinking about this for a while. I'd like to donate some money, seventy five dollars towards the bill, towards the utility that was building it while we use the electric. That's all. I don't know who to give it to. Probably the one who does the most work for us, Brenda.
Thank you, Jim.
And can I say one other thing? On the August seventh night out, the Lions, it's not on their poster, but we are doing a stop the bus for school kids. And, uh, if we could find that somehow, if we could get that on there, you know, stop the bus, that'd be awesome. We got a bus from Johnson Center, whoever it is down there and that's about it. So.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, Deanna Schmidt.
Hi, I'm Deanna Schmidt and I am one of the board members for the Optimists of Sussex, Lannan, Lisbon and Mother. And like Jim, um, I noticed that because you don't do a lot of stuff with the youth through, um, directly through, we don't sponsor a lot, we're to give records to the village. But I have a check here for the village of Lannan to help with the maintenance of the land that we go ahead and put our tent on when we use for the, um, Sussex, or for the, I'm sorry, the Lannan car show. So.
Well, thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much.
And I'll do the same, I guess, given to Brenda.
Thank you. Wait, did you all bring checks tonight?
Yeah.
I got a bill.
Mister Brandt?
You know, mine is like good sound like brand. I'm, uh, landowner, I guess, and, and, and planning here with a business as, as well know. And I just heard a couple of comments and such, just as you were talking in regards to, you know, the village needs help in different financial ways. And I think one of the ways do that is working together with your businesses and reaching out to your businesses. So I heard that there needs to be some weed stuff going on. So what I'm willing to do, okay, I'm going a little bit out on a limb here, approve my doggone temporary crushing permit. And I will send out my crews that do lawn work regularly and I will trim all the weeds in this village at no charge. Okay? Think about that.
Legal counsel will say quid pro quo to that.
They're insured for five million dollars. There's, I mean, it, it's, it's a business proposal, okay? I, I need to crush that material. I don't have time to wait for A F W to do whatever the village wants him to do. I've done everything past what I can do to try to get them. The owner of the land, though, he, the property, he don't care. He, he doesn't give a literature. I just want to get the stuff done so that we can move forward. I think we're going to be in this village a lot of years, but not necessarily myself, but my children. And we want to be good neighbors. We want to work with the village. We want to donate to the village, do that, you know? And maybe there's some businesses that don't feel that way in this village or whatever. You know, if I was Tommy, I'd be cutting it every week just to help the village. And he has a whole lot more money than me, but I, like I said, I'm going out on a limb. I'm willing to take and trim every damn weed in this whole village with my truce. Yeah, it's just to help me out here, prove a permit. Temporary permit, that's a very simple thing. We'll be crushing for weeds. That's all I'm asking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, Jan, Schmidt.
Jan.
Yep.
Um, I was wondering, are you charging businesses to put their banners up on the baseball field?
Um, no, but that has been a topic of discussion in the past.
But no, it's been a very big discussion in the past. Um, and I know I called Monomie Falls. They charge like two hundred dollars for people to put their bands up there. You're always talking about, I'm sure you are putting art, but there's a lot of banners there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mentioned Laura about the use. I'm sorry, I have a more about me. I'm not quite hearing you. We're just seeing. The banners that are up at the baseball field.
Yeah.
Years ago, we talked about charging people to the box. So at that time, I had called Monomie Falls to find out what they did with the banner that they're being built and they do charge.
Okay.
And I was just wondering.
They're two hundred and eighty-five dollars to put them up in Monomie Falls because we're being fired about it and, but it was small for this last year. But as a business and village land, I would be honored to pay two hundred, three hundred dollars to put up a banner over that baseball.
When I called years ago, it was two bucks. So, I'm true.
Yeah, I, I just mentioned, um, to Colleen that we need to revisit. We had a discussion, um, I don't know if it was last fall or the fall before during the budget workshops about starting a banner program. I said I would, you know, donate a certain, you know, a bunch of them or some, I don't even remember. But, and we wanted to, to do that exact same thing. We got a little pushback from the club. We've got some new leadership at the clubs. Uh, and, uh, so I think that that will be on point of discussion. Uh, any other public comments? Word? Oh.
Yeah, Michael, Tom, and Patrick, we all didn't know. Um, we've got car show coming up. This car show is known in New Zealand and Australia. It is a big deal. And sometimes it almost seems like no one is kind of looking at all the expensive cotton field. I remember what that field looked like before. The village started taking care of that. And the amount of money that that car show brings in that not only through Carter Sun Main, through Jan, but the Optimist Club and Lions Club that gets donated back to this community every year. And it's not a thousand dollars. It's a couple more than that. Some of things I think that's forgotten. Jan's efforts, Gary's efforts, um, on the metro cars. It's about twelve hundred dollars in cost of fuel for one, one. Think of the expense that Gary and the car owners are putting out. Keep that in mind when you're looking at the cost with it. Because if something happens to these people, for the car to go on. That's speaking for the Lions Club. That's our responsibility.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, I think, uh, I think I speak for just about everyone up here. I don't know that everyone necessarily attends the show, but I think everybody appreciates the value that it brings to the village. What an amazing event that it is. And the impact that it does have beyond just, you know, what, what Jan helps out in the community, that helps the businesses, provides exposure to the businesses, to the community as a whole and so. But thank you for the reminder.
If I may, I just have one more question, Patrick.
Well, we're, what, what do you got?
I just want to know is, do I have to have a special permit to let people park down at my lot?
On, on that day? No.
Okay. I didn't know.
No, thank you for checks. Uh, item nine, discussion of possible action on the approval of operators licenses for the period of July eighth, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five for the following. Sandy Shider, Mitzvahs, Rick Kiotrowski, Mitzvahs, Michael Gilde Meister, Mitzvahs, and Deanna Schmidt, Optimist Club. We have all of their applications here. I assume that the police department has run all the requisite background checks and everybody's okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
And then Deanna Schmidt one, um, at the top it says Michelle Schmidt. And then later the name of the applicant is Deanna Schmidt. Or is that two different people or the same person?
It's two different people. She has the bartending license and then I just, uh, my side number.
Oh, okay. So that you painted that for the forest?
I have not. No, I was informed that only one person or a day who would be there has taken it. I'll be bartending with her or Michelle Schmidt is completely divorced. Yes, because and she has her paperwork and you put it last week.
I just want to use this.
Oh, yeah, no. No, who never people, they love me.
Would entertain the motion.
I made the vote.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, discussion of possible action for temporary class B for the Optimist Club of S L L B for July twenty eighth, twenty twenty four for the car show.
Take the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, discussion of possible action on approval of resolution for C D I grant. So as I believe we discussed at our last meeting, maybe I'm getting them mixed up. Yeah. Um, the Bartels, uh, who are currently doing the work across the street here, um, have been given an opportunity to apply for some grants, uh, through the W E D C. And, uh, as such, they have requested, um, a resolution of showing support from the board. Um, so what I would like to do is just, uh, read into the record here, uh, the resolution that Hector's firm has prepared for us and then we can, uh, take a vote on that. Um, resolution nominated Eric and Marsh, Michelle Bartel through their LLC to apply to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for Community Development Investments, C D I grant funds relating to the redevelopment of seventy-two ninety-one North Land Road, Lannan, Wisconsin. The village board of the village of Lannan, Waukesha County, Wisconsin, resolves as follows. Whereas over the last several years, the village of Lannan village has been actively working to attract new businesses to its downtown, especially infill developments that would reduce the number of vacant storefronts and land in the downtown area. And whereas the village working through its plan commission has encouraged redevelopment within its section seventy-eight dash A D A R O P business original plat zoning district in an effort to attract more food and beverage outlets and small specialty stores in its historic central business neighborhood. And whereas the property which sits at the intersection of West Main Street and Lannan Road with the address of seventy-two ninety-one North Land Road Lannan, Wisconsin, has sat empty without any business tenants or residential dwellers in its upper floor for continuous multiple years. And whereas Eric and Michelle Bartel, the Bartels, purchased the property and have formed a Wisconsin Limited Liability Company and have engaged Sawdust Architects LLC to assist in the preparation of detailed submission to the Lannan Plan Commission for its review and the granting of preliminary conceptual approval received on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. And whereas an application for C D I funding from W E D C has been formally invited, which will enable the Bartels to redevelop the property with respect to its exterior and interior conditions, create housing and jobs in the community and add value to Lannan's busiest downtown traffic intersection in addition to transforming an aged, empty structure, which unfortunately in its current condition reflects badly on the village of Lannan. And whereas the Bartels through their LLC as the direct applicant to the W E D C have been understood to represent that they will be wholly responsible to follow all the rules and regulations of the W E D C contract and will cover the costs and requirements of all reporting audits, compliance, and default if applicable under any W E D C award. Now therefore be resolved that the above recitals be fully incorporated into this resolution and be it further resolved that the village, Lannan Board, village, Lannan Village Board, Village of Lannan. Village Board hereby authorize the village to formally nominate the Bartel through their LLC to apply to W E D C for the award of C D I grant funds to develop the property at seventy-two ninety-one North Lannan Road, Lannan, Wisconsin. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall become effective upon adoption. Adopted by the village board of the village of Lannan this eighth day of July, twenty twenty four. So I only play a lawyer on T V, so any questions you have about any of that language should be directed to the man to my left. Or I'll accept the, the motion.
I would like to make a motion to accept the resolution number twenty twenty-four dash whatever, um, in support of the application of the Bartels for the W E D C grant. I will second.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second, and another discussion other than the possible traffic corrections. Do we know what the, uh, amount of the grant you're looking for, dollar values?
Um, they're matching us one to one, so it'll be grant two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Big money, nice. Yeah, it's amazing. That's great. I hope you get it. This is our last piece to go in. Um, I'm going to go down to writing, so.
That's awesome.
Good job. Thank you.
Good luck. Will be, yeah. Is that for this year enough?
Yeah.
You still qualify?
Yes, for what you pay for.
Yeah.
Their first year just started July first.
Excellent. So, uh, any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, thank you again for all your work and diligence and hopefully this, uh, helps put you over the edge.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I will need a signed copy to be able to input the vote. I will need a signed copy to be able to input all our sign documents.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a, uh, a revised copy of the type of graphic productions and then as soon as that gets forwarded to Brenda, I'll come in and sign it and she can. I think of the rising.
Okay.
Yeah.
My, my name is Sub One L.
One L, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, now on to the really exciting stuff. Item number, uh, twelve, discussion of possible action on approval of a copier contract.
Um, our Rego copier that we have in the office was, um. Due in like December, so they've been just doing them monthly thus. Um, so I decided to go out and just get other pricing, um. With local companies, so I got one from Rhine, um, which came in quite a bit lower than the Rego. Contract. There's a couple of little things that need to be. Added, um, effects expansion kit, so it's like sixty-six dollars plus the eight thirty-one. Um, compared to the one thirty or one fifty that Rego came in at. Um, so. We would be looking at, um, changing the company for our copier.
And is this the one that you went and saw the demo of? How long is the contract for?
I think it's a five years, five year.
Five?
Usually, yeah, they used to do three years.
Yeah.
They've been doing five years.
Okay.
Another question I have for you is under the, the Rico one, they. I know I had a Rico before at a company that we were able to scan in an email.
We can do that.
You can do that. Can you do? It doesn't say anything about that in the rhyme.
Yeah, they do. They do all of that.
Yep. Okay, because it wasn't stated in there.
No, because we do that a lot with ours. So I was, I went in to their company and they did a demo of all of that stuff to. To make sure that it did all of that for us. It does more, so.
Because I believe that is extremely convenient.
What we do is we scan it into our folders and then we can attach that document setting. Anything is great.
But it's just, it's really convenient to do. You have those email addresses in there.
Yep.
And, you know, you can have something, you can send it directly to, to Patrick. And I have to email it. It goes right to you. Um, and stapling.
The stapling ability? Yes, it has stapling capabilities. They only. They did, um, put in a inner folding unit, but it was either the folding unit, which we thought would be helpful for like our utility bills and stuff. But it was either that or the stapling, so we are kind of leaning more towards the stapling because we would use that for.
My personal experience is leaning towards a stapling because the folding, the folding machines jam.
Yeah.
Because we had them at the company that I retired from. And they jammed more often than not.
Yeah, uh, when, especially when you're trying to hold it up and it's coming out, I mean, we're doing piles and copies, you know, so. Um, so yeah, we use the staple and feature more, so we, we're gonna go back out. Yeah.
Which one do you prefer, Brenda?
Um. I think I'd like to try the Rhine one just because they're local. Um, more local. Um, Rico has been pretty okay when we need service, but they don't have a lot of technicians in the area. So you're waiting on their schedule, which can sometimes, you know, to it there, you know, so. It's hard. It shuts us down for a while.
What is the response time for repairs, you call it?
Um, they try to get it same day.
Do this, so now I know that the, the Rico that I, we had. Um, it also notified the company. That when we were low on toner or when there was things that went wrong with the computer or with the, um. The copier, we didn't have to call them.
They do that now. Uh, both companies do that now where they can automatically, it sends them the, the reads automatically, so they don't have to read it and email it right then or whatever. They, they have a lot of capabilities now where we just send right on over to them.
So it also sends us the capability that there's a problem with the machine, so send in a technician.
Yeah.
And you don't have to call them.
Right.
Okay, and then they take care of the toner.
Yes.
But we take care of the paper.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, Eric says maximum for all on-site response. If I know what you've had is in Swift, uh, that you respond sign where a couple of times.
We were down a couple of days. And that very often, but it did happen.
I would notice too that the, um, the sharpening that they talked about. Uh, they have two trays of five hundred and fifty sheets. That's, that's a whole pack.
Yeah, it's a whole.
So it's not like you have to break up the pack.
Right, it's a whole room, so it's nice.
Do you have the capability to legal if you need it?
Yes, yep, you can change either tray. And it automatically detects what size papers in there and will automatically pull when you bring a public document.
Okay, do you ever need eleven by seventeen?
We have eleven by seventeen. We actually do our eleven by seventeen, then we do rego.
Okay, so you have the capability of setting up one.
All right, well, um, I would like to make a motion that, uh. We accept the, um, contract as presented for the new copier system.
From Rhine?
Right, from Rhine, yes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Couple of seconds. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Is there similar pricing or shorter contract period in fifteen months?
Um. I don't know if I had these either of that with either company. Because they're so, their machines last for that long that they don't need to. Replace them as often as they used to. So it used to be a three-year contract with Rico. Um, but their, their machines don't need to be replaced thus.
Because depending on level usage. Uh, in three years, you can run off the same number of copies that you wanted in a five-year contract. And it's not here to number copies. Here to a time period.
Right.
And they're not obligated to replace the machine. They just continue service.
Right, it's a lease, so they would have to face that if anything is wrong, so.
It looks like there is a per-page charge as well.
There is for both companies, yeah.
In addition to the lease.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but they kind of averaged our, our usage, you know, kind of looked at what our usage is and, I mean, it's so. It goes up and down per month because obviously like right now, our usage is probably a few thousand. Whereas sometime, you know, next month it may be three hundred, you know, it's, it just fluctuates so much depending on. The, the time of year, what month it is to, you know, what's going on, so. Are we out of fire plane right now? Um, I think it was a three-year contract with Rego. But obviously we're into that three and a half ready, so.
Right, ready.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor of the, uh, approval of the contract with Rhine? They, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, discussion of possible action regarding interceptor inflow and infiltration documentation and analysis. You wanna do this one, Eric? Or you want me to read through Ben's comments?
Well. Uh, I don't, it's quite boring. Uh. I was involved in this, uh, ten or twelve years ago. So I'm somewhat familiar with it, although I don't know quite what we're talking about, what happened in twenty twenty. Um, but primarily the problem is normally manhole. And where they're located, we had problems in the past with some that are located in, uh, flood plains or wetlands. And over the winter, the, uh. Frost can leave the manholes and they have gaskets on them and they start to leak. Uh, the second most thing is the pipes coming in and out of the manholes leaks around the man, around the pipes. Um. So I wouldn't do anything more, prove anything more than just the desktop analysis. So we see, uh. What the records are and wondering who has the televising records from twenty twenty and what was ever done with those. Uh, but that's where we would start any of these. Uh, we had a meeting with Sussex. Two weeks ago about, uh. Our water mains and we just touched on this a little bit. And, uh, they think they have somewhat identified the area that is of the major concern. So we don't have to look at the whole system. So, uh, I would make a recommendation that we, uh. Conduct, uh, what's called then calls a desktop analysis. And authorizing, uh, what was it, ten thousand, oh, that's a, ten thousand dollars restraint to do that. Uh, and then that'll tell it that we gotta go on to do field inspection. Next gets a little bit more expensive because you gotta look at every manhole. Uh, that would be my idea. I'll make that a motion if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. I'll make that a motion, uh, to, uh, perform. A desktop analysis of the existing data. Yes, detailed in that which memo of Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, it's authorized spanned in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Here we got a motion, a second. Um, I'll just, I will add that we do get, um. Reimbursed for a portion of those expenses through the other participating in this hour is. Through the, uh. It is full agreement, so. Just so people understand that that's a shared cost.
And it would come out of the school fund also.
Yes. Yep. Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve. Item number fourteen, um, discussion of possible action on. Referendum ideas. Um, so I did, uh, just receive here, um. A legalized version of, um, my. Rough attempt at some language for this. Um. I think Hector and I have to do some further refining here. Um. To determine whether or not we can. Simply attach it to, as we had discussed at the last meeting, uh, twenty-five percent of the public safety budget, which would be police and fire budgets. Um, we just need to check on the legality of that and whether or not that's going to be an allowable. calculation formula. Um, or if we're gonna have to tie this strictly to a percentage of the levy amount. Um, which will get a little more complicated, but I'll work through that with. Hector and hopefully in short order, we will have some final language so that we can. Start trying to publicize, uh, publicize this and get it moving forward because there is a seventy-day. Yeah. Uh, requirement. Prior to the election.
Is there a, a, a cap on the amount of the levy limit? I know it's percentage, but. Go for what we can, or has the state got anything to say?
I think, I, I'm not aware of any cats. It's basically what you can get approved.
Okay, yeah, so long you get it approved. You see the. The logic behind what has been discussed makes a great deal of sense. The unknown is that the billing that we will be receiving from the nominee call. Something beyond our control. And the size of the budget that will be approved for public safety, namely police department. Services is also a variable. And the concept that was, uh, loaded. Is that there would be an increase twenty-five percent of that. To provide more comprehensive service with regards to the police department. On the other hand, when a voter. Goes to, to fold and asked to approve. The referendums, besides from the immediate past year's calculation. It, it's, uh, somewhat of an unknown. Because the budget can be changed in any direction. By the governing body, so long as there is no, uh, budget that exceeds the levy limits. And so we will be doing some research. Uh, probably going back to the department. Uh, revenue to see if that's ever been approved any place. Uh, I have not seen it myself. But it's, it's a logical process.
It's surprising that it hasn't been precedent.
Okay.
It, it seems surprising to me. It's so intuitive that it seems strange that there isn't precedent.
Well, unfortunately. The law and the statutes lag behind. You know, what is necessary.
For what is deemed to be common sense.
That's, that's from the high end also. With regard to do, yes, I mean, brights that are in store. Not being able to use video equipment to catch feeders. Uh. Yes.
Um, i- is anybody against continuing to move forward with the premise that we've kind of outlined so far though, and just to have? I think we have to, yeah.
I think it was really.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we'll table it for further discussion?
Yes, sir. Yes.
I'll make a motion to table the referendum ideas for the, uh, for the future.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to table. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item fifteen, discussion and action on payment of the bills.
I make a motion that we, um, made the bills as presented. All the time? Oh, that's a hundred eighty-three. Twenty?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight or something, right? Yes, um, one eighty-three something, yeah. One eighty-three, forty-eight. Yeah.
Yep. And we did get a second for that?
Yeah.
And, um, any other discussion?
It's the question on the, yeah, it looks like the police department's pack, uh, primarily looks like a quick turn to go. For fuel, because it's only forty-five bucks on the.
Uh, because they, they changed, uh, ownership. So it's under BAM, um, BAM United. It's going on second page.
I, I, I didn't.
Yeah, that one, okay. Uh, any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, engineers report, he's absent. Item seventeen, attorneys report, he's.
Nothing.
Item eighteen, president's report.
Pass it out.
I have nothing additional. Item nineteen. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, before we adjourn, uh, why are we doing anything for, um, Mike as far as the crushing? There was nothing on the agenda.
Right.
And I know that Hector sent out an email. About, um. A temporary, if I remember correctly, a temporary permission to do that.
It's, it's not on our agenda, so.
It's not.
Discuss.
And, and one problem also for Mike.
Okay.
Is it's gotta be the property owner. That's, that's the box where. It's gotta be A F W requesting.
If, if it's gonna be at that property. No, that's. But I, I've been in communication with my B and M as well to outline.
Okay.
So we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We do have weeds, Mike. We still have weeds. Did you get my email? Mike?